We are going to start this meeting, the work session. Make note that all members are here. Also remember, council members, to turn off your mics when you're not speaking and turn on your mics when you are speaking. If you have them on when you're not speaking and you're saying anything, like cursing them under your breath, it's going out on Zoom. So make sure you turn your mic off. All right, we're going to start the work session. Hold a discussion establishing regular meetings with the Kennedale Independent School District, Board of Trustees. George?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is on the agenda at the request, really, of Councilmember Alton, who wanted to talk about whether or not there's a possibility of having a committee or having meetings between the school district and the city on some kind of a regular basis. So I might defer to Mr. Alton. As you know, some of what we've discussed is maybe having, proposing that that be a meeting that we work with the school district on, to have a meeting of the whole city council and the whole school board a couple of times a year, rather than a special committee. But it's on this agenda for the council to discuss and hopefully give me some direction on what you'd like to do.
Yeah, I just thought it was a good idea for the amount of growth we have coming to the city. It's imperative that we communicate with the school and create a committee consistent of two city council members, two school board members, and then two citizens. So we can just kind of keep them informed on what's going on with all the development, and they could do the same with us on what their plan is. So I just thought it was a pretty good idea to, a better way to communicate.
Josh, I was going to, in a discussion that, because, you know, I think Lynda once pointed out that we need to have all the council involved. So if we could get the school board to be willing to meet with us, say, two, three times a year on a quarterly basis or whatever, have a joint meeting so everybody's hearing what they're saying and everybody's hearing what we're saying. My mic's on. Yep. I can follow my own instructions.
You can't hear very good.
Oh, that's probably a good thing, Jan.
You can't talk very good either.
Okay, I'll pull this mask down. Is that better?
Yeah.
The sad part is you can see my face, so you'll have to deal with my voice. But if we could have the entire council there each time, three times or four times, rather than creating an ordinance that only two of us are there, everybody gets to have a say, would that be sufficient if we approached the school board about setting up a regular schedule of the entire boards of both?
Yeah, I think anything's a great idea, as long as we get together.
Can you reach out to the superintendent and see if we can set up a schedule of meetings? Pull your mask down.
I'm sorry, certainly can, and I had, I've had one brief discussion with Mr. G about it. And of course, what I suggested to him, I've suggested to you, is if we had a meeting of the whole council and the whole school board. Obviously, there are a lot of things going on in the city organization. We have a number of presentations that we've made to other people, and I think it would be good for the whole school board to see the kinds of developments that are going on in the city, where they're occurring, help them do their planning. But they have things going on in the school district as well that their staff could present that the whole city council could have the benefit of. So if that's acceptable to the council, I'd be happy to reach out some more and see if we can try to refine that into a plan that would be acceptable to both boards.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, next item is discussion of the senior and disabled discount provisions of the current water sewer rate ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, that is on the agenda, to request of Councilmember Rhodes. Just as a little background, and I'm not exactly sure what the discussion will be, but the council will recall that last summer, you adopted a new rate ordinance for water and sewer utilities. That ordinance includes, and has included, for a number of years, a provision that provides for a senior discount to people who qualify pursuant to the terms of that ordinance to get a reduction in their water bill and in their sewer bill. And the amendments that were made to that last summer were, and as near as I can tell, the only amendments that have really been made since the initiation of that program are that the amount of the discount last summer was increased from $7.50 for water and $7.50 for sewer to $8 for each of those, to go into effect when we transfer the utility billing over to the city of Arlington, which occurred last month. So the new rates are in effect. The other provision that was added to the ordinance was that people who are qualified for it had to re-qualify at least, and make application to re-qualify at least every two years. And the reason for that is so that we could keep track of who was getting the discount and whether or not they still qualified for it. So that's the reason for having the requirement that they reapply. But, and other than that, there may have been a change from age 65 to age 60 at some point in the intervening years. But other than that, the qualifications, the income requirement or a disability requirement have remained in place since the inception, as near as I can tell. So again, this is on the agenda so council can discuss it. If you want to make further changes in that discount program, then all I need is your direction.
Lynda, would you like to take it up from there?
Yes, thank you. First off, thank you to George and Lakita for adding this to the agenda. I really appreciate it. I'd received several comments and inquiries and a few complaints about it, mainly because the senior or disabled person that was receiving that discount did not understand the process or was surprised that they had to apply at all, because it had evidently maybe not been done properly, you know, maybe the every-two-years-reapply hadn't been done. So they were quite surprised that, hey, I've been getting this for years and years, why do I have to reapply? You know, I'm still here, I'm not dead yet. So thanks again for putting this on the agenda. I thought it was important for us to talk about it and see, is there anything that we might want to change or, you know, we may want to leave it like it is? I don't know. But whenever it was very, very first initiated, I can actually talk about that, because I was here, it was in the '80s. And the intent was to take the list from Tarrant Appraisal District, the tax-exempt list for the over 65 and the disabled persons. So anyone that was on that list, then they got the discount. Pretty easy if you're a staffer trying to make those changes, you get that list every year, so you could check, see if any changes were made, delete those or add some, whichever the case is. Because most times, or a lot of times, when, if a person did deceased, then it would say to the estate of. So you would know, okay, that person's not there, so they don't get that discount anymore. So anyway, I asked Leslie, and thanks to her, she did a little research and sent out the ordinances when this was changed. So no longer did, we have to use the tax exempt rules, but the council at that time, for probably very good reason, they decided, hey, why is this limited to just people that are their own property? What about the renter that's really struggling and they are over 65? You know, what about them? So then I think that's when the age limit dropped to 60 and the income requirement came into play. You know, you can't qualify unless you make less than, I think it's $32,000. And as far as the disabled, that kind of stayed the same. Well, no, it did not, because they did not use a tax rule. They just had to bring in something to prove that they were disabled to get the rate. Now then, the complaints that I have been receiving, one of them, well, I've only received one for the disabled, and I think that's kind of an unfortunate event for that person, this particular person. The spouse passed away that was on the disability, and so the surviving widow, she's no longer, according to our ordinance, eligible to receive the discounts. She had contacted us through email, and it's not the money, it's just the principle of the thing. In her situation, she's going to be okay. But what about the other lady down the street that she doesn't have that income? You know, she makes less than the $32,000 and, well, actually, if that were the case, I guess she'd get the over 65. But point being is if you are on the tax-exempt list for the disability and your spouse passes away, the surviving spouse is still entitled to that discount. So should we be any different? I guess is one thing. And then the other, for the over 65, should we leave it as the $32,000? I mean, I see why it was put in place, I understand that. But I'm just asking on behalf of some of the residents. And I can just, I can tell you a few things, a few comments that I had received. One is whenever the letter was sent out to inform these citizens, okay, now you need to apply for this, you know, we're trying to get a process established and be on task with that. They received the letter, but it only gave them 10 days to supply all the information. That was rather quick considering how many years has it been, you know, that they had to apply. So that was just one little complaint. The other one was, it's now the city's business how much I make. Why do I have to give them that? Okay. The other one says, I don't make enough to even file a tax return. And, okay, so they could submit it via the social security income, you know, proof of how much they make that way. But there was another resident that she had two forms of income, and both of those added together was less than the $32,000. But when you go online to apply, there's only, you can only submit one form. So the online process would only allow you to submit that. And then another thing that our ordinance, I think it says, do you have to supply a copy of the electric bill? Why? And then if I have to supply it, there's no way to supply it when you go online to fill out the form. You can't do it. So you have to, you know, submit that another way. I think that was all that I had. So yeah, that was the main gist of it, is, you know, probably a lot of it was these people that were getting the discount, they had no clue that we, you know, was going to move forward when we transitioned to Arlington and, okay, let's get our record straight and stay on task with this, which, you know, we need to, we need to be doing that. But I think it was kind of like, ooh, 10 days, I gotta find my form, where's my form? You know, why do I have to supply? Why does the city need to know how much I make? You know, it's just a lot of questions, a lot of information they didn't understand. So anyway, in closing, I just was wondering what council thought about it, if you think we should leave it alone, or is this something that we need to kind of talk about?
All right, well, Chad?
Yeah, I got a lot of those requests as well. And, you know, my mom falls in that category, where my father passed away and now she found herself all of a sudden with no income and having to go get a job and losing all the discounts that she did have. So I'm very well okay with changing that requirement, for sure, that if you've already received the discount and your spouse dies, you should continue to get it, because all of a sudden you're met with undue hardships you weren't prepared for. Yeah, I think there's definitely points here that we can, we can adjust and make it better for everybody, so.
Gary?
Well, I'm, man, I hear myself loud, hallelujah. I'm kind of with Chad. I mean, I think something needs to be revisited on it. I would like to even see it maybe be extended out to maybe five years instead of two years. I don't know exactly why our elderly have to pay the same price as we do, you know what I'm saying, if it comes down to that. So I think we ought to do everything we can for our elderly and make it as easy a process to sign up and extend it out to some more years, I think, instead of two years. It's my opinion on that.
Josh?
I have the same opinion as everybody else. I don't think I could have said it any better than Gary did, so.
George, does that give you enough direction to go back and try to bring something up to the council next meeting? Some options?
Sure, we can look at ordinance amendments and make sure that it's clear exactly what's in the ordinance and what might change, and we can bring that back on your next agenda.
Okay. Does that work?
Yes, thank you.
All right, if there's no questions about anything else, we'll move on to our regular session. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to hold the executive session to the end, because that way these people don't have to be in here. I talked to Drew, he says there will be no action items out of executive session, so I don't want people to have to wait around here, and then they come out and we just go, we move to adjourn. So we'll get our regular session out of the way first. And let's make note that everybody that's here for the work session is here for the regular session, and I'm going to ask Pastor Mitchell to give us our invocation, followed by the pledges by Josh Alton. You can do it right there.
I'm going to stand up and honor my God. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. Father is a governing body over this city. Father, we ask you to give us godly wisdom and help us to make the right choices and decisions, Father. Father, we know that you're an all-knowing God and you have the direction already planned for us, so we call that forth, Father. Father, I want to thank you for our first responders, and I ask you to watch over them. I ask you to watch over this governing body too, Father, and all of our citizens. Keep them safe, Lord, because we know we're in trying times. So Father, we want to glorify your name here tonight, and we give you the honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, the highest states of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. On the test of pride, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God. All right. That was the only one I made. All right. That was awfully quiet for so many people in this room. I know, right? All right, next up is the Citizens and Visitors Forum. Couple of things, for those who are here to talk about Sweeney Hyatt, we're moving the public hearing until June 15th, I believe, but I'm going to go ahead and let you go ahead and speak on it now, and if you want to come back and speak again, you can speak twice on it. So I didn't want you to come out here for no reason. So we will do both of those at the same time. First off, let me bring up, I've got it in this order here, Sarah Johnson?
I forgot to put on there, I wanted to thank the city council members that came out that week. That was really harsh, it showed really leadership. Chad, you did amazing, by contacting me to include us, because, you know, I knew the seniors, and I think we did what we could, but I think we could have done better, because I found out there wasn't just one senior that died that week, there was two seniors that died that week, when I found out. And we don't want that to happen again. We need to either have a committee going, we need to come up with some ideas, what we could do better, because we knew it was coming. They told us it was coming. And, you know, we've got to be better prepared, because we don't even want to lose any more seniors to something that we could have prevented, had we just, you know, if we had to have a call person to call every senior to make sure they're okay, to see what they need, a committee, different committees doing that, we've got to do better. Especially with people with families who, you know, my son and his children were blessed to come to our house, because we still had power. So we need to think of better ways to protect our citizens, because we should have been prepared. There's just no reason why we were so not prepared for this. You know, I praise Chad, you know, this is one of the reasons that, you know, we don't always agree on things, but we work together and we're civil to each other. And I want to do that with all of you. And you've got to respect our views and our opinion and not be defensive when we're telling you something that, this is not going right, okay? I got accused of something two weeks ago, that I threw a business under the bus and reported them. I did not. And somebody wants to make it a bad thing that I'm friends with Tamika and Iris. That's not a bad thing. Of course, Iris could handle things better when she's talking to the city people, when things don't go her way. But there's still people, and they want to do business here. Tamika has some wonderful ideas for our youth and for our seniors. And I just want people to hear her out. I want George to hear her out, I want Melissa to hear her out, and try to be more friendly and more helpful to these new businesses, because there's no reason why there should be, well, you got to read this and follow the rules. We need better, we need better communication between new businesses and city administration and to work together to better our community. There's no reason for it. And another thing was, I put in about the library board and I have not heard anything back. You know, do I have to wait, or why? I mean, because I feel like I could help our seniors more in interacting, like I did with the senior center, Lynda knows, I was quite involved in helping with different things, so they could have stuff. Chad did a lot of fundraisers with me, so we could help our seniors. And another thing I would like to know, how is, what is the plan when you reopen? How is it going to be funded? Because the rental is not the only thing, is not going to be sufficient enough to run that center on a weekly basis. It's just not. There's so many things involved. And who is going to make sure the meals are edible?
Sarah, I've got to cut you there at 3:00.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay. Thank you very much. Next up, Tamika Sargent.
How you guys doing?
Fine, how you doing?
I'll make this short and I'll make it brief. I have a problem right now, and I am the owner of a property of 900 people in this office. Ms. Daly, I'm going to call names, are trying to intimidate me and harass me, but I don't have that kind of fear whatsoever. I'm trying to do something productive for the city of Kennedale. They say that I'm a newcomer. Well, you can address that however you like, but I'm almost 60 years of age, I'm not new to anything. So I feel like what I want to bring to the city of Kennedale, you're going to either accept it or not. But I stand not alone, I stand with God and I have others. You know, they tried to intimidate me when I was talking to Cole, when Cole addressed a small issue about flower pots. This lady here has tried to have fundraises. They taking pictures of me, well, I wasn't there, because it was her project, taking pictures, people standing in the bushes looking, I can't see anything other people being harassing whatsoever. If they come to my home property, we have a very, very big issue, because I have no lighting to be able to see. But I'm letting the citizens and the councils know right now that this is going to become a major, major issue. And I'm real quiet, and, you know, when I do decide to speak out, it's going to be heard. And so my property, if, you know, I tried to ask Ms. Daly different issues, and at this time, I told her I do not understand her language. But at the same time, she gives me 400 sheets to look at. Okay, I'm good with that. I'm not going to complain. This is my tone. The last time I spoke, they had the city manager come up, and I'm thinking, I don't have a temper, not yet, but I can. I'm not an angry black woman, but I can. There's a lot of things I can do, but out of respect of my name, Tamika Washington Sargent, I don't do that kind of stuff. And because I try to help the citizens and the seniors, I don't see anything wrong with that. I just need your support and your respect, and you'll get the same thing from me. If not, we can take this situation a little farther. I may not do nothing in Kennedale, but your name will be written up and you will be heard. We can carry it as far as Frisco, we can go as far as anything, but right now, intimidating me, harassing me, I don't think, my family won't even allow that. And like I said, I'm not doing anything but letting other people do things to support this community, and I want to do the same thing. And so all I'm saying is, some changes need to be made, show a little bit more respect, because all I know is that this shouldn't happen whatsoever. And again, Mayor, I hope I can get an opportunity to get a street light, because it's really dark, and I've contacted you numerous of times about that.
I will make sure that we address that here in just a minute.
Yes, sir. Thank you kindly.
All right, Joe Palmer. You didn't say what you're speaking about? You said an agenda item, did you have one specifically?
Well, the public comment, I'm not speaking on an agenda item.
Okay.
Were you expecting public comment?
You put in public hearing, I didn't know which public hearing you were talking about.
Public comment.
Okay.
So did I have a point of clarification? You're going to strike from the agenda, the swiney height item only, the swiney height portion of that agenda item and not?
We're delaying the public hearing to June 15.
On that entire item?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let people speak.
Appreciate that. So I did have a few comments, but I couldn't help but listen to the two speakers before me. I would appreciate some of my time back, but whatever. You know, I looked up the Texas State Constitution while I was listening to the two previous speakers, and I found Article 1, Section 2, inherent political power, republican form of government. All political power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their benefit. The faith of the people of Texas stands pledged to the preservation of a republican form of government, and subject to this limitation only, they have at all times the inalienable right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in such manner as they think is expedient. So what I do hear from these two ladies who spoke before me and from business owners around the city, I represent the Kennedale Alliance of Business Owners and residents in general, there's a prevailing feeling that this government does not listen to the people, that this government taxes the people of the city and the businesses, and it makes their lives difficult, to the point that they either can't run their business and they have to sell their property and leave, and then I guess a developer comes in and puts in, you know, McMansions or, you know, HUD housing, and that makes some people in this room happy. I can't understand it. You know, and on that point, I really don't understand why you're giving away land. This happened a couple of months ago at a meeting. I would call $10 giving away land. Acres and acres and acres giving it away for HUD housing and then giving away a couple of other acres to a developer. So you want to give away land, that's fine, but you really need to understand, you need to be made to understand one way or another, either go back to school, go to economics, learn about private property, but you do need to understand that you don't create anything. You don't create anything. Everything that you manage is something that you took from the people, and then you disperse and administer and play games with it. You really don't make anything. If you did make anything, you know, if the city of Kennedale were in charge of hamburgers, they'd be $500 and you'd be out of them all the time. You know, and then you'd pass an ordinance forcing people to buy them, and, you know, you criticize people for not buying them. So, you know, I hate to say these things, but this is, I'm trying to communicate to you, the prevailing theme that I understand when I talk to people in the city. You know, and if I wanted to overturn this council, I wouldn't be here talking to you about it. You know, I'd be out there knocking doors, I would let you make these mistakes. Please look at what you're doing and consider the effect on the budget. Next budget rolls around, you know, we're going to be screaming and yelling, we don't have enough money for fire, we don't have enough money for police, and anybody who wants to cut $1 or one penny from anywhere in the budget is against fire and police, they're against the safety of the children. We're going to have lots to talk about later in this meeting, about hemorrhaging money and about what else can be done. Thank you.
I got corrected, we are moving the impact fee, not the swiney Hyatt plan, so yeah, people who are saying about swiney Hyatt, you'll be good to go. All right, I'm going to call on Jan Joplin about the hotel motel fund.
So Jan Joplin, 204 Hilltop Drive. Do you want me to talk about just that piece or all three pieces while I'm here?
Yeah, they're all three pieces.
Okay. It's quick, that one, so I just had a question on the...
Oh, yeah, one last question.
Okay, yeah, and you don't actually have to answer it now?
Yeah.
Okay. On the investment report for quarter ending March 31st, there is a Fund 30 for the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. January and February were about the same, like $13,000 something, March was $18,000 something, but I don't know where that's coming from. So I was just curious about that, that's just a curious question. I mean, I know eventually we're going to have a hotel, but hopefully at some point. So that's one. And then the other thing I want to say, thank you so much for... And then the other thing I want to say, thank you so much for bringing to, to have a conversation about the discount for the seniors and our disabled because I also received a lot of those comments and there was confusion about, it's possible when the switch to Arlington happened that it's not line itemed? You know, because when we sent the billing, they could see their discount and now it's not. Is that correct? Okay. So I know there was some confusion about that when they received their bill. They're like, hey, why, why, I'm not getting it, my discount. And then they called, they didn't know who to call. Do I call Kennedale? Do I call Arlington? And when they called, they were told they had to do this, this, and this, and it had to be notarized and it actually didn't. And there wasn't an attention to where to send it. And so there's just a lot of confusion. And why, why am I not getting my discount anymore? Shouldn't you at least give me something? So I'm glad to know that there is a process in place that's, you know, helping them through this, but I do agree with the extending it five years. I would even go as far as not having to requalify, you know, because once you're a senior, not too much changes financially until you're gone. So that's, that's kind of my thing. Because I know with some seniors, they don't know how to work technology. They don't have access to even a computer. I got a call from someone that I don't even know how to do this, who to call. And for our seniors, it's so confusing for them that the less confusing that we can make it, the better for them. So I'd just like to add that to your, so thank you for considering that very much. The only other thing I have is on F1 on your agenda item, on amending the budget. I would just like for you to consider taking the citizens into consideration. There is going to be another budget upcoming and I know that the firefighters and police are well deserving of their pay increase and I'm thankful for them for what they do all the time, but especially during the freeze, that was very difficult and during the pandemic. But I would just ask that you take the citizens into consideration because we've had a maximum tax increase over the past couple of years with the last one not being necessary. And there was during the pandemic year for us and then the tax freeze on top of that. So as you're having the conversation on that item, I would just ask that you take the citizens into consideration. Thank you.
It has been a crazy month, just getting stuff done. Of course, everybody knows it's early voting started, so regardless, go vote, exercise your right. That's pretty much all I got to say.
I have nothing to report.
I drove by Magnolia Hills today and looked at the sold signs and it was pretty impressive that a lot of the lots are already sold and I think it's going to be a great thing.
Well, like Chad said, you know, it's been kind of crazy this past couple of weeks hitting the streets right now. It's our second spring break, so I'm balancing walking door to door with taking care of the kiddos, so. But I just want to say, everybody in here I've met from being on this council and I cherish those relationships deeply. And, you know, I just want, you know, I never knew God would put me in the path to be in the seat I'm in today. And I take every decision item seriously and I thank you for allowing me to be your voice and the time that I've had spent here. I really appreciate it, I really do. And thank you from the bottom of my heart and that's all I got to say.
Productive member of the community and whereas child abuse is one of our nation's most serious public health problems and threatens the safety of our community. And whereas in Tarrant County, 6,203 children were confirmed victims of child abuse or neglect in 2020. Whereas the Alliance for Children provided trauma and force services to 2,125 children in 2020. Whereas finding solutions to prevent child abuse is a community responsibility and depends upon the involvement of all citizens. And whereas effective child abuse investigation treatment programs succeed because of partnerships among public, private agencies, schools, religions organizations, medical services, and business community. I, Mayor Brian Johnson, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Kennedale and urge all citizens to work to help reduce abuse and neglect significantly in the years to come. That, other announcements is that I, again, Camp Hope is coming up. We take kids who have experienced domestic abuse. This is our eight years of doing this and we will be doing it again in June. I also attended a meeting of the mayor's council and the mayor's council has established a finance committee, which I have been named to serve on for the Tarrant County mayors. Also attended the homeless coalition meeting and issues of homeless camps has come up and what they're planning on doing about that. And I also attended the TRTC, the Tarrant Regional Transportation Coalition Board meeting when we were talking about the upcoming bond program because we know that investments in, government investments in infrastructure are economic drivers. We do know that. And so we are looking forward to helping to get that bond passed and then looking further down the road to whatever federal government plan, if they come up with one, on infrastructure comes about. Next up, updates from the, oh, I'm also proclaiming May 15th as Kids to Parks Day, celebrated by Kidfish. Kidfish is back in Sonora Park. Okay, what's the echo going on? Echo, echo, echo. George, updates and if we can answer the question on the hotel and then do we, also, what's the latest on the senior center and the improvements there?
Okay, let me, let me address the senior center first. We've been talking about that for some time. We've been going through quite a challenge of getting bids to do. We want to do a good bit of restoration or renovation at the senior center as of this, and we've had problem getting bids for that from bidders that we've identified. I do, as of this afternoon, have a contract on my desk that I hope to sign and have a contractor working at the senior center, hopefully next, as early as next week. And get the restrooms completely refurbished, all new ceiling tiles put in and a lot of work done on the outside of the building. So that's the objective and we're very close to at least letting a contract for that. On the hotel, I'm not sure what the question was about the hotel. If you're talking about the hotel up in Oak Crest and...
Jane, how about, could you just repeat the question?
So on this, the investment fund, there's a cash breakdown by fund and under Fund 30, there's a hotel motel tax fund and there's an amount on there and I'm just wondering where it came from.
And I, I'm sorry, Jane, I can't answer that, but Lakita might be able to answer it if you'd...
It's for Airbnb.
Oh, okay.
So the hotel motel tax, the control of the office gives a permission to charge for that tax for Airbnb.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. So if, since you wasn't on a microphone, if you didn't hear that, while we don't have a hotel...
Right.
Airbnbs do, are subject to the same occupancy tax as hotels are and that's where it comes from.
Okay. Any other updates from the city manager?
No, sir, not that's all.
Financial reports.
Mayor, the financial reports are in your packet as they are every month and if council has questions about those and, or as far as I know, Lakita didn't have anything specifically to highlight about that tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Lakita? All right. Scheduled investment activity, any questions on that? All right, then we'll move to the consent agenda. These matters have appeared on previous agendas, require little or no deliberation or considered routine. Mr. Jario, unless somebody wants to remove an item, if somebody wants to remove an item, please let me know and we'll remove it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think I'm going to remove nearly all of them. I have a few questions about two, three, and four.
Okay, so then we'll just, we'll take two, three, and four separately.
Okay.
One thing is approval of the minutes. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Does this mean second?
Is that further revised?
Yes.
Okay, I second that motion then if it's further revised, yeah.
Then please enter your vote. Okay, if we're missing a pad, everybody just raise their hand if it's... What? It's working? Okay. Maybe put their vote in then.
It's been a year.
Yeah.
Gary, did you vote?
He doesn't.
He doesn't have a pad.
I would just use my package instead of pad. I didn't know that's how I would vote. Hadn't been in here before.
It's been a while. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, good. All right, so item two, consider adoption resolution meaning five season approving an updated total project cost of $409.64 to exclude the matching portion by the city of 244 of 063 approving the low bidder Excel 4 construction for community development block grant, CDBG project for the rehabilitation of water lines in the 400 to 600 blocks of Third Street. Larry?
Mr. Mayor, what, Gary specifically, did you have a question about that item?
Yes, sir. I was wondering what the $14,999 was for. So in other words, it went above and beyond the original? And I was wondering if we can get some, something to show us, tell us exactly what it was.
The $14,999 covers the engineering for the project, which comes out of the Tarrant County bond that they grant us.
Okay.
And Gary, as I understand it, Larry, that should have been included in the amendment that we had you do at the March meeting and because of the misunderstanding from the county of what they pay out of their share, that is an amount that is increasing our cost in that total project and we needed to cover it and make sure council had authorized us to move forward with the project, given our full participation.
I may be missing something then because Larry said it's in the 180, but then you're saying that it's above and beyond the 180 or it's not beyond it?
Let me clarify that. And the, to award the contract for construction, we need to cover that $14,999 out of the 180. If you take that engineering out, what's left for construction is basically $165,000, basically $15,000. So we have to increase our amount to cover the, what engineering is coming out of the grant from the county to cover the total amount of $409,000 for construction.
The cost of construction went up when we brought the amendment to you last month. And if in fact the county is now going to pay that engineering cost, that nearly $15,000 out of their 180 portion of the project, that leaves an insufficient amount there to complete the project at the new cost that you approved last month. So we've, collectively between the county and the city, we need council's approval for that additional $15,000 that resulted from the increased cost of the project.
I understand that, but I was just trying to figure out where the cost came from. So was it part of the 180 or was it part of the construction cost? So the 180 was for engineering fees, correct?
No, sir. The 180 is the grant we get from the county.
Okay.
Okay. Of that, there is a percentage for engineering for the contract that comes out of the bond that we get from the county. That is, that is set at, for this project at $14,999. When I submitted last month, I failed to account for that $14,999 in our estimate to you. By taking that out and the county paying for that first, that leaves only $165,000 left for construction. So what I asked for last month was $15,000 short to cover the construction.
The county's participation is not changing. It's still $180,000, but the project cost increased and the engineering costs Larry failed to include in the total city participation cost when you approved that ordinance last month. In other words, the combination of money between the county and the city's authorized participation by the council is $15,000 short of what we need to do the project.
I understand that and I know we all make errors, but it just looks funny that all of a sudden we need to pay 15 more thousand dollars. You know what I'm saying?
Understood.
So that's just my concern. We need to do checks and balances for our citizens, so.
Very good. Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion on Resolution 569.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number 569.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Although, all right, then please enter your vote.
I'm going to enter mine with my hand. Say good.
Amendment one to professional service agreement with Safe Bill Texas, amending the scope of service to include fire department plan reviews. George?
Okay, Gary, I assume your question is...
Yes, sir, I have some questions.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You ready for these? All right. Jose, okay, so do we collect the same amount from fees as are paid out to Safe Bill? So in other words, if they come in and, and they charge us, are we charged the citizen or the builder or whatever we're charging? Do we get the same amount? Is it dollar for dollar or is there a benefit to the city?
No, we don't make money on it, but let me give you a brief explanation. We entered into the contract with Safe Bill to do our building inspection and plan review. And at the, about the same time, the city council amended our fee schedules for various fees. One of the things that you approved in the fee schedule that we charge to people who are doing business with the city was a provision that if we have, whatever we have to pay for those plan reviews, the applicant for that project needs to reimburse us or pay for those fees. So what's happened here is that at the time we did the Safe Bill contract, we went into an agreement where they did all of our plan review and inspections because we reduced staff, except the fire department generally continued to do fire plan reviews and sprinkler system and so forth. We're now getting some projects that are beyond the ability of the fire department to handle on a regular basis. They're either large or too numerous, but that contract with Safe Bill does not provide for them to do our fire plan reviews. And so we're asking you to amend that with a fee schedule to pay Safe Bill for it, but those fees will be passed on to the applicants dollar for dollar so that the city is not out any money in that and the applicants are paying the full cost.
Okay, that probably covers my next two questions then, so we're good.
Any other questions, Gary? Is that it?
No, that's it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion, approval of Amendment one to the professional service agreement with Safe Bill Texas.
I move for the approval of the Amendment one to the professional service agreement with Safe Bill Texas.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? And please enter your vote. Or raise your hand. Doing it the old fashioned way. Anybody, yes? Our motion passes 4-0. Next one, adoption of resolution finding that the Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor, DCRF, to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. to amend its distribution cost recovery factor, DCRF, to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Authorizing participation with the OCSC, authorizing the hiring of legal counsel and consulting service, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses should be reimbursed by the company. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public is required by law, and requiring notice to this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Gary, do you have a question?
Yes, if I'm on the right one here. So this is.
Item four?
Item four, E4, yes, sir. So it talks about the city of Kennedale entering into a, or actually it's stated like this, authorizes the hiring of a law firm. So do we have a cost factor in that? How does that, how's that gonna work?
Sorry. The way this works, and the council has faced these cases on a pretty regular basis, because most cities in Texas who do, do business with Encore don't have the ability to do a finite analyzing of a very complicated rate case. In this case, it's a, it's a request by Encore for a $97 million increase in their revenues into their system. And most cities in Texas, perhaps with the exception of, of cities like Dallas or Houston, who have the ability to analyze rate cases themselves, contract with the Encore Cities Steering Committee, and they represent all of these cities as a group and negotiate with the, with Encore over those rates, and generally save cities millions of dollars in the course of that negoti- negotiation. They also represent those cities in front of the PUC as those cases go forward for consideration at the state level. And then they come back to the cities with a recommendation upon those, determining one, that the request of Encore is legal and that it's justified, and they negotiate with them on behalf of all their client cities. And then they bring those costs down and come back to the city with a recommendation. And under the statutes that allow cities to contract with the Encore Cities Steering Committee, that OSCs, is a provision that the company, Encore, has to pay our costs in having that review done. So the, the law firm that does that for this group of cities, this consortium of cities, bills on a regular basis during the case of these rate cases, and those invoices go to Encore, who are paid on a timely basis during the course of their rate case appeal. State law requires that they pay our fees to have that done and that representation. The firm of Lloyd Goslink is the firm that represents a huge number of those cities. There is another law firm, Herrera Law Firm, that represents another large number of cities in these cases as well. But we have always used Lloyd Goslink, they're familiar with the city of Kennedale, and they are the ones that, that represent us in those cases. So the fees are paid by Encore, we get very professional representation, and history has shown us that we, we receive a great deal of benefit by not trying to evaluate a case ourselves. Now, it does require that we deny the case and then let them negotiate it. So that's what you're doing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion for adoption of resolution finding that the Encore Electric Delivery Company's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, authorizing participation with the OCSC, authorizing the hiring of legal counsel and consulting services, finding the city's reasonable rates and case expenses that shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution passes is open to the public is required by law, and requiring notice to the resolution to the company and legal counsel. Just please, if you're in for that, say so, so moved.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Then please enter your vote. Gary say yes? All right, motion passes unanimously. Next up, adoption of individual considerations, consider an adoption of an ordinance amending the 2020-21 budget. As you remember, the last council meeting, we said, we'd at least look at raises, and we'd come back with any possible proposals, if any. So I guess this is over to.
Lakeeta.
Lakeeta?
Lakeeta has a brief presentation about essentially what's covered in your packet as well, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, let me see if I can get this right. Leslie, I know you showed me earlier, but, uh, let's see. Okay, is that better? Ready? Okay, I'm getting better at this. George, did you want to do an intro, or did you want me to do it, or? Okay. Okay. Mayor and Council, if you can recall at our March meeting, Councilmember Autumn brought up the discussion about an amendment to the budget that included compensation changes. And so as a result, we thought it would, the time presented itself to actually do a budget amendment to increase revenues that we thought that needed to be updated. And at the same time, we have included some options that the council may want to discuss and to consider this evening for any compensation changes as well. So we'll be talking about what fund balances we're bringing forward from the audit. We'll be looking at differences in expenditure and revenue that we're expecting, that you may want to consider in it. And then finally, we'll talk about some compensation options. Okay. Our general fund revenue, as you can see, we have here the 2021 adopted total revenues, 7.3 million. And we're proposing to amend that to 7.6 million in revenue. The columns that are highlighted are the actual revenue categories that we're proposing to be updated. So property tax, we're looking at a larger revenue stream there. Sales tax as well, which we know from the audit, that's, that's no real surprise, because we did have a, quite a bit of increase from the audit as well. Also licenses and permits. With the, with the, is it the Beacon, the, the newest development that we had? We have already had some unexpected revenue, a revenue that we hadn't previously budgeted for, for that. And so because of where we are right now and projecting forward, we've increased our revenue for licenses and permits. Fines and fees, you'll see that we actually reduced. The majority of that revenue is from court. And with court being closed and us trying to kind of provide some leniency for some of the cases and give defendants more time to come up with their fine and fee money, we thought it was necessary to reduce that some. So you see about a $40,000 reduction there. And then our investment earnings are down some. So the total that we're looking at here is an increase in the revenue, actually, of about 356,000. So that's the first portion of the amendment. The second portion of the amendment basically involves the general fund expenditures. And again, we're talking generally about the general fund here with this presentation, because that is where the bulk of the change is going to occur within the budget amendment. We do have some small revenue and expenditure changes within stormwater and water and streets, but the majority of it is going to be in the general fund. So the purposes of this presentation, we're gonna focus on the general fund. The only really expenditure in any department here is we're changing and adding $50,000 in expenditure for the senior center, which we've discussed previously. George mentioned having received a few different bids and everything. So what we did was, we took a look at what we've received so far. We think we can comfortably add $50,000 for those senior center renovations that we've been needing to do for quite some time. So opportunity presents itself for us to do that, we wanted to add that in. And then the other piece is the salary increases. You'll notice that in your council, within your council packet, you have a report that details out two different scenarios for compensation adjustments. And the first scenario is what you're looking at now on the screen. You see an amended amount of 740,054. Okay? The 740,054 does include a one, a one-time supplement payment to eligible employees for the period of October of 2020 to April of 2021. And then moving forward into that, what that includes is a 10% increase for sworn personnel. So for public safety, we're looking at a, a 10% increase based on where they're at in their current, current step plan. So basically what that's doing is putting them in their correct step plan and giving that step plan a 10% increase. And what that's doing also for non-sworn personnel is that it's moving non-sworn closer to market. So as you can remember, we, we don't have a current market survey, so we know that we're still a couple of years behind on it. But the last market survey, salary survey that we presented you with, we implemented in fiscal year 1920. That did not put non-sworn personnel at market, of course. Got us a little bit closer, probably 70, 80%. And so now that we had a surplus in the budget, we wanted to present what it will look like to put public safety personnel in their correct steps with the 10%, as well as non-sworn personnel. Non-sworn personnel, it, it doesn't mean that everybody will get a 10% increase. What it means is that we're trying to move everyone closer to market. We won't be at market. If you look at your council report, we may be closer to 90% if we implement this option for non-sworn personnel. Okay? So with this particular scenario, we're looking at amending the budget from 7.6 million in expenditures to 8.4 million in expenditures. And I'll show you in a second what the, what that would do with our fund balance. So that's, that's scenario one. And this is another scenario that we wanted to present, to give you an opportunity to discuss or to look at. Of course, it includes also the 50,000 for the senior center. But if you look at the salary increases line item, it increases 339,000. And that increase would allow the same scenario with the 10% for public safety, upgrading their step plan, putting non-sworn closer to market, but it would all begin on May 1st. So in the first scenario, you're looking at a larger amount, because you have that one supplement payment. And then May 1st moving forward. On scenario two, you have everything beginning on May 1st. So this one, we want to, you know, just, you have this in your packet already, but it just kind of gives you the detail of what each scenario would do, how much we'll be adding to compensation. For compensation itself, 793,169 would be added in scenario one. And that, that number is larger, of course, because we have the supplement that goes back from October 1st to April 30th. And then with the, the new salary, new compensation starting May 1st and moving forward to the rest of the fiscal year. And then on scenario two, again, we're adding 361,698 in salaries. Okay? So a little bit less than half. And then that one will start May 1st of 2021. Again, both of them are getting non-sworn closer to market, probably about 95, 90, 90% of market, and upgrading public safety plans. As you know, we've had several vacancies that have occurred in fire lately. And with those exit interviews, we're learning that they want to leave because we don't pay enough. And so, you know, we now have an opportunity to go in and, and look at what we can do to re-implement the plans that we originally put in place for fiscal year 1920.
Lakeeta, if I could be sure and point out that the only difference in scenario one and two is the starting time for the compensation adjustments. And the, those slides that you had up there show what the fund balance would be on each of those scenarios. And with scenario one, the more expensive plan, the fund balance this year would still be 20%. It would be 26% under scenario two.
Yes, under scenario one, it would be at 20%, and under scenario two, it would be at 26%. And our policy calls for between 18 and 25%. So with either, either of these plans, you know, it, fiscal year 20 really provided a set of circumstances for us to, to re-implement plans, if that's what the council desires to do. We, we know, we had CARES funding to kind of come in and give us a boost that year. And while, while we couldn't plan around CARES funding, and we could never do anything like that, what it did was, it, it really decreased our general fund expenditures to the extent that now, you know, we have the room to do something like this. So we thought it'd be a favorable time to bring forward this budget amendment and to get the council's input on it.
Any questions for Lakeeta?
Yeah, I got one.
Go ahead, Josh.
I was just gonna, if you can let everybody know, I'm sure a lot of people have questions about, is this sustainable for years to come, giving them this raise?
Yes, so we have looked at a projection that goes out the next three years into year 2024 for each option. Again, for option one, if that's implemented, we expect to end the fiscal year at 20.3% on fund balance. Moving into fiscal '22, we will draw the fund balance down, and it will be at 15.6%, okay? And then for one more year, it'd be at 15%. And then the next year, it will gradually go back up. So for year one, Josh, we're looking at 20.3%, then 15.6%, then 15.1%, and then 19.2%. That's what we're looking at for option one. So for that, for that particular option, we are drawing the fund balance down. We, you know, we, we budgeted, you know, to do that. We're, we're not at a point yet to where our revenues is outrunning our expenditures every year. We're, we're just not there yet. So we, we will still be budgeted to draw the fund balance down for fiscal year '21. But for fiscal year '22, '23, and '24, the drawdown becomes smaller and smaller. So I have a, I'm gonna see if I can pull this up. Not. I have a little worksheet here that may help.
Lakeeta, I got a question right quick.
Sure.
If I'm not interrupting. At what point, when the, when the taxes were raised, I guess last year or the year before last one? or the year before last, whenever they were, do you know what the fund balance was at that part, at that point? So in other words, was it 12%, 15%, 20%?
It was, the budget had been amended for it to be 12%.
It was at 12%?
Mm-hmm. But when we actually did the audit, we ended the year with more than 30%.
Right, right, I understand that, yeah.
And so that's why we're here. But to go back to Councilmember Althoms, if you're looking at option one, this provides a visual of what, how much fund balance will be drawn down from year to year. So for the first one, we're looking at a 20.3% fund balance. We're drawing it down by 742,000. The next year, we're drawing it down by 398,000. Then in year three, we're only drawing it down by 38,000. And from there, we grow back. So we're starting to increase the fund balance by year three with 337,000. So your percentages are right here. This shows you current budget. This would be what we're amending it to for option one, 20.3%. First year after that, 15. Then after that, 15, and after that, 19.2. So even with option one, we're still within, you know, our fund balance requirement. Now for these two years, we're not. But 15% is a lot better than 7% or 8%. So that's that one. So you go over to option two, and these are the drawdown percentages. So if we adopt the amended budget as presented with option two, we're ending the year with 26.3%. Then next year, 26.4%, then 26.8%, and then we grow from there, 27.7%. Now, these particular scenarios do not take into account, you know, any increase in programs, right? Because every year when we do the budget, you know, there may be program changes, that things that we want to add and things like that. These do not include that. But what this also does not include is any influx in revenue that we might receive. The revenue projections presented here are very, very conservative, okay? I've only added about 4% growth rate to give you these percentages. We typically grow larger than that and faster than that. But to be conservative, I wanted to keep it around 4% on revenue and keep the expenditure steady over those next three years to give you an idea of what this would look like. So for example, if you were considering option one, by year two, year three, you know, if we increase revenue significantly, we would have more fund balance than this, okay? More fund balance means more opportunities for new programs and to continue step plan placement and things like that. By the time we get to year four, we're looking at 19.2%. So we're still fairly comfortable to add in new programs and things like that. And on option two, the comfort level is higher because if we exceed 4% growth on revenue, it will give us even more room. So the difference with your options on compensation, as George stated, is the timing of it. We wanted to start October 20th, or do we want it to start May 1st?
How do you get your 4% projections? Do you look at approved developments?
No, and that's the good thing. We did not include any new development in the revenue projection. We basically just looked at the last five years of growth and we took lower than an average of that. And so...
I'm sorry, Lakita, when she says we're looking at five years of growth, she's talking about growth in the AV, or appraised value of essentially existing property, not taking into consideration what we're adding to the tax roll through development.
So the, you know, revenue has an opportunity to go higher than that. You know, we don't want to, you know, overstate it. It has, definitely has an opportunity to go higher than the 4% of what we're presenting. AV values could drive that up. New development could drive that up. If you look at this year, we've already received development revenue that we didn't plan for, which is good. So we try not to use that into this type of scenario because we want to provide you with the most conservative thing that we can. As I stated, you know, for fiscal year 20, we got a boost, you know, because of CARES, because of the increased sales tax revenue, because of the increased property tax revenue. We may get a boost in fiscal year '21 because, you know, from the new American Recovery Act plan that the city will probably get revenue for. We cannot budget for that. But if it improves our fund balance, then that's a real reality that we have. And the more that it does that, you know, it becomes a favorable time for us to be able to do these type of things when we normally, in the past few years, haven't been able to.
All right, Chad, you got a question?
When you did the projections, is that strictly the appraised value increases? There's no tax increases in there? That's, everything is as it is right now, just projected 4% growth?
Yes, there is no tax increase in this.
Gary, questions?
I don't really have a question, but lots of comments probably, when it's appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so if we went with the scenario one, it sounds like those first two years would be real slim as far as any requests from staff for programs and that type of thing. If we want to maintain a lower tax rate for taxpayers. I know for myself, as a councilperson, I have two major obligations. And one is to the taxpayers and the other's for all of you employees. And very much appreciated. And I would like to see us to get this done and talk to George a little bit about it yesterday and told him I would do a lot of thinking and I am, I still am.
Yes.
But it's good to hear your answers and your explanations, especially the question that Chad had as far as the tax increase. So these numbers are provided that we have no tax increase.
Yes, these numbers are with the 77 cents tax rate that we have now.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Lakita.
I'm not worried about it. Keep expenditures level, that's what I heard the finance director just say. Has anybody looked at what a piece of plywood costs? Did anybody think it would be that expensive a year ago, two years ago? I don't know how in the world you can make a projection three and four years into the future, especially when the projection comes from somebody whose projection was so far off during the last budget hearings. You're over a million dollars off in the projection given by the finance director that influenced every member of this council to increase taxes on the people during the last budget. We are going to spend reserves down from 20% to 8%, as what the finance director said in the September meeting. The reasoning for doing so could be viewed as defensible. Increase taxes, that increases reserves, which improves the bond rating before you run a bond and go further into debt. In the same way that's defensible to inform a drunk on the steps of a casino of the safest way he can open a bottle, like cutting himself. But that isn't where we are. That isn't what you're doing. You want to increase reserves in order to provide raises. This will deplete the reserves back down to an amount lower than they were, which will set us all up for another panic before the next budget vote. So the big question is, when that discussion begins, do you want the same people in a position to make the decision on your taxes and the city's budget as we're misled the last two times? Where is the apology from these people who claim to act in your best interest? Councilman Wondell, you said during the budget hearing that you were one tax increase away from selling everything and moving out of town. And I heard you when you said that, and I think a lot of other people in this city heard you. Now is your chance to amend. A tone for that bad budget vote, which was based on false information. You've been given choices, but you don't have to take one of the choices that you've been offered. You've got to find a way to return this money back to the taxpayer, use this money and not borrow so much, not issue so many bonds. And it's really important for people, well, 191 to 282 on the fines and fee increase, that's quite a haul. You really cashed in on the people, didn't you? $356,000 increase, that's an increase in the tax levy, all the taxes, fines, and the fees. So it's really important that people connect what you're talking about right now with what this is that comes in the mail. This is your property tax statement. You vote yes on all these expenditures and you spend all this gravy that you just found out you had, and it's going to make life difficult for people. It's going to make life difficult for people who live in this city. City employees are not the only ones who have children in this city. Linda, you spoke about it briefly. You have to take care of everybody.
Her leg break?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Jeff Navarres and Shannon Navarres at 1009 State Drive in Kennedale. Couple of weeks ago was my 41st birthday, a day I was actually looking forward to because my 40th birthday was canceled by COVID. Instead of waking up in the morning for breakfast in bed by my kids and my wife, I was awoken in the morning by my three-year-old daughter screaming, "Help! That mommy had fell." I quickly got out of the bed and found my wife outside, and her leg had broke. It was a condition that had been kind of building up from the previous two months and just kind of resulted in this matter. Being who I am, I reacted quickly. I woke up my daughter, my oldest daughter. We tried to help my wife into the car. That was a big mistake on my part. I quickly realized how the leg moved, that I had done an error. I called 911 because I realized one thing, that I absolutely needed some help. I'll leave the 911 story for another time. But once we got past that process, you can hear in the distance, the ambulance lights go on and the sirens coming. As it got closer, we had some hope in our hearts. The two paramedics came very quickly and hopped out of the vehicle and assessed the situation. They took control, guided me on what I needed to do to help my wife out of the car and onto the stretcher. And I have to say that seeing the results of these two fine men who helped my wife, how the most, the biggest factor of it was their teamwork. And that kind of teamwork you can see by their training and how they've been well-trained through our senior staff that stands behind me. Now, that was my experience with our fine men and women behind me to my left, but my wife did have something to say about it as well.
Thank you. Great to see all of you guys. My husband wanted to kind of, wanted me to speak on my experience. And I realized who knew, who knew that, you know, breaking your leg could be so painful. But who knew that the fine men that came to help us could be so personable and so, just so kind in the midst of like my complete panic from what had just happened, because I was trying to process it myself. Meacham and Creed, awesome name, they just took control of the situation. We normally would have gone to Methodist, but they knew that JPS was a better trauma center and that I had suffered a trauma. And their quick thinking in that led me to find the right diagnosis to what was happening with my leg because they decided to take me there where normally we would have gone to Methodist because we're used to it. I had all my babies there, right? So, and in the ambulance, just how personable they were and how just calm. You could just see that the training that they had received was amazing, but they were just incredible human beings as well. And we don't want to have a turnover on people like that. We want to keep people like that.
Mr. Mayor, I know I'm running out of time, so I'll be quick. I can imagine the same scenario if we had outsourced either department. And I thank both departments in their response. We had heard over the radio that even the police department wanted to respond once they had heard what happened to my wife. I'm asking for you guys to support the budget amendment that will give the step races that we have already promised it to these people behind me. And I also like to remind you guys that we have an awesome staff here that I work with usually on a weekly basis that deserves the same treatment. So that's what my wife and I are asking you today, is to support this amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, whoops, got it going there. We have, we have an options here, one, two, or none. I need somebody to make a motion on any one of those so that we can have a discussion before we have discussion. So anybody have a motion?
I'll just make a little discussion first.
I gotta have a motion first.
I'm sorry.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to consider it option ordinance meaning fiscal year 2020, '21 budget, Appendix A, Scenario One.
Option one, you said?
Mm-hmm.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All right, discussion. So we'll start off, Linda, you want to start? Or on the board?
Yes, thank you. As I stated earlier, as a councilperson, my obligation is to the taxpayers and also to the employees. And probably in that order if you had to prioritize because without the tax money, none of us would be here right now. At the last council meeting, I stated that I am for raises, which I am. And at that time, I said, I'm definitely not for retroing. I still don't like the retro. But when you look at the numbers that Lakita presented and the fact that it will not increase the taxes, I'm still considering. I prefer the scenario two, but the motion on the table now is for scenario one. Staff is very confident in the numbers that they have presented, even though that we all hope that COVID and the CARES funding ends right now. You know, so that next budget, we don't even have that to contend with. But they feel confident that with that out of the picture, that we should be able to handle this and not raise the taxes. So I'm challenging staff to please hold that true if this passes. Thank you.
Gary?
Well, Kennedale has the fourth highest taxes around. So for me, it's all about taxes for our citizens. I'm a tax-paying citizen. I pay more taxes than I have money. So I'm going to get a loan from the mayor before we leave. But for me, I get the tax value every year. I think that's what Joe was alluding to. So even though we don't do a tax increase here, our tax values go up, so we get a tax increase. So anytime that we don't, as a governing body, allow ourselves to be able to lower taxes, when we get a tax increase from the county, it goes up anyway. So when you deplete these funds down to that point, if anything goes wrong, then what's the first thing you're going to do? We got to raise taxes. So I can't support one, even though there's a motion been made. But even though you guys deserve it, I want you to have it with all my heart, all the city employees. I love all these guys. They're doing a tremendous job. But this city has an obligation to our citizens, and so I can't support it.
Josh?
I was just going to kind of reiterate what Linda said. You know, we have obligation to the citizens as well as the employees. Linda was an employee for a city. I'm an employee for a city. I understand the importance of this. I understand the importance of this. And we've neglected them way too long, way too long. It's time to do the right thing.
Chad?
You know, I'll just reiterate that, you know, yeah, we do have a, an obligation to our taxpayers. And 2020 was, for frank of better words, a hell of a year. I have a business that has pretty much been shut down because of COVID restrictions. We're just now allowing events to occur again, and I have an event business. So I went from making dollars one day to making no dollars the next day. And, you know, I was a previous civil employee. I worked for the city of Grand Prairie for six and a half years. And the reason I left was because 10 seconds after I left, I had a job offer for almost triple what I was making at the city, doing the exact same thing. And I've said it once and I'll say it again, just because you have a servant's calling to go work in the public sector doesn't mean you should be treated as a second-class citizen. That's not true. It shouldn't be that way. We should pay our people what they're worth, because unintended consequences are, it costs us a heck of a lot of money to retrain the person that left, and it costs us a heck of a lot of money in overtime to fill the position that that person left. And when you look at it budget-wise, there's some savings that are probably going to be had as well, even though we increased these, because we stopped letting people leave. And I believe Chief Brown said, was it 16 or 18 people we hired over the last year, and you've trained 14 or 16 of those, all but like two? So that, our turnover is literally like 98% or something? That's, that's unheard of. And if I, if I had that scenario in my business, I couldn't stay in business. It would cost me too much to keep the doors open just by retraining people in the time that it takes to do those things. So, long story longer, you know, these, these budgets, these raises were promised to them for years now, and for the ones that have stuck around, I'll be honest, I don't know why you did. And, but all I can say is I am absolutely 100% grateful you did, because when you compare our departments to others, we've got the best. There's nothing to, there's no doubt about it. We have the best. And I know your loyalty to us has not been rewarded like it should have been, and this is the moment to make that right. And I had a lot of conversations with Laquita. I wanted to make sure, you know, we talked about it last month, that I just wanted to know that if we did this, because this was one-time things that had happened, we're not painting ourselves into a corner. So I'm going to put the caveat on this, that don't even dare ask for a tax increase next year. I'm going to go ahead and pre-tell you my vote is no.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Please enter your vote, please. Okay, right, Gary's no. Everybody else put in their vote? That's correct. Is it up on the screen? So you can't put it up on the screen? All right, so what, read out the vote then, so that we can't put it on the screen? Motion passes three to two. Item two, consider approval of a bid for an ambulance. Which, again, we've talked about an ambulance for a long time. We all know that the ambulance, and Chief can tell me, we take the old ambulance, well, the newest one, it goes in a reserve. We sold the old one, and the new one goes in for five years, and it's rotation. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Yeah, what do you know? That's what happened when you served with firefighters almost your entire council career. All right, so I need, do you want to have a brief presentation?
Mayor, I don't have a presentation. Just point out that this is an issue the council's discussed several times. We're trying to get in a position to place the order for this ambulance, although we won't be paying for it today. This, the council has stated on two occasions that you would want to commit the first part of our issue of CO in August to purchase the ambulance and a fire truck, and this is the first step in that, but we need to get the order placed in order to be able to even take delivery of this next year. So, and I've placed on the agenda because of the purchase price, obviously $254,049 is the bid from a local vendor here in Kennedale, and we'd recommend that you approve this purchase and authorize us to place the order.
Is this the ambulance service down off?
Southwest Ambulance located here in Kennedale.
Any questions about the ambulance? Yeah, anybody want to make a motion?
I, I have a question. This might seem silly, but Chief, is it a diesel or gas?
Diesel.
Okay, we're good to go, because those gas motors and those have got a lot of problems.
Okay, I was wondering, Gary, what the difference is. I don't know.
Yeah, diesel's a lot better, yes, sir.
Good to know. Heard something new.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, please enter your vote. You see S? Motion passes four zero. Oh, good, we're getting a new ambulance. That's great. That's exciting.
Thank you.
All right, item three, consider resolution setting a public hearing to be held by the city council beginning at 5:30 Tuesday, June 15th, to consider amendments to land use assumptions, capital improvements, social, wastewater, and roadway. This is just setting the date for an impact fee public hearing.
That's, that's correct. Mayor, this item is on your agenda. You had set this, this hearing for tonight, but because of a glitch and our not being able to publish it for the full 30 days, we're asking you to move the hearing to June the 15th. The proposal of the report is in your packet. That's the biggest part of your agenda packet. That's, but the good news is you now, if you pass this resolution to move the hearing to June, you have about 60 days to read that. So we'd recommend approving the date in June.
Do you have a motion to set the date to June 15th, 2021?
I move we change the date to June 15th, 2021.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All right, please enter your vote. While you're entering your vote, do I see our police officer of the year here in the audience? Captain Hall? No, can we, can we take a moment to recognize him? Captain Hall, would you, would you say a few words? Captain Hall? No, no, I'm calling on you, I don't call on you, Daryl. I want you to say a few words for, yeah. Yeah, don't just stand over there. We just need to recognize.
It's just a microphone.
Well, this is Devon Starland, gives our officer of the year for 2020. He's our SRO at the high school. He also serves all elementary schools and junior high as well. He's been a part of several different programs for the school. One of the biggest ones is our East Academy that he holds at the high school. We have one also coming up this June that he'll be promoting as well. In 2018, he was also the officer of the year for the...
I think one state place. Yeah.
Yeah, one state place recognizing for officer of the year for crime at the high school. And sort of has a zero response within all of Tarrant County. So he's very, very proud of it.
Well, thank you very much. Sorry, I couldn't let that pass. Did we get a vote in on that? It passed four zero. All right, next up is case PZ 2110. Consider approval request by Greg Brown to vacate the replat of 11591161 Falcon View Drive, Lot 15R, Block 7, Falconwood Estates, Phase 2, City of Kennedale, Tarrant County. That was approved April 10th, 2008, case PZ 1803.
Mr. Mayor, let me try to give a very brief explanation of this. It's already in your packet.
Yeah, because I have no idea what I just said.
Well, this is in Falcon, this is in the Falconwood subdivision, and in 2008, the council had approved a replat of two lots in that subdivision to combine them into one lot. The owner now, and that lot has never developed. It was, it was changed from a, from two half-acre lots to one one-acre lot. It has not developed. The owner now wants to vacate that plat that was approved or that replat and return these two lots to their original configuration as two one-half acre lots. And this is, the way to do that is to vacate that previous replat. That's the recommendation that we would make to council, that you approve this vacation of that, of that replat done in 2008.
All right, any questions?
Just to be clear, so they're, they're being divided into exactly equal lots back to the original?
Yes, back to the original plating of that subdivision, yes.
All right, do you have a motion to, on PZ 2110?
I move reapprove case PZ 21-10.
I have a second. Any further discussion? If not, please enter your vote. Motion passes four zero. All right, next is public hearing and ordinance, meaning 2012 comprehensive plan by many transportation plans.
Yes, let me make some comments, Mayor. This is, this is a companion piece to the impact fee ordinance that you'll be considering in June, but that impact fee proposal or update, the intention is to include these two streets in a fashion that would allow us to incorporate them into the impact fee capital improvements plan, so that impact fees could help us do improvements to these roadways in the future and improve our transportation system in the city. So both of these streets are improvements on the Oak Crest to, to the alignment of Oak Crest with Gilman across the parkway and with Sweeney Hyatt to improve that, to, and upgrade that, so that it too would become eligible for impact fee consideration as improvements could be made in the future. So in order to take advantage of impact fees and the inclusion of these two streets on our impact fee capital improvements plan that you're going to be considering at public hearing in June, the thoroughfare plan needs to be updated to include those. So this is simply, it's really almost a house cleaning measure to make sure that those two things are compatible.
So Drew, for impact fees, we charge impact fees for every new constructed building, and we have a rate for that, but for those fees to be used, they have to be on our comprehensive plan for impact fees to use on that street?
I don't know that they have to. They need to be in your capital improvement plan that's approved as part of the impact fee process.
Okay.
What are you saying? Start with the year.
Oh, yeah, you want to take your mask off for a second?
Yeah. I don't have a mask on. Now, you... I don't know that they necessarily have to be included in the comprehensive amendment, but they definitely have to be in the capital improvement plans that are approved as part of the impact fee process.
I think Larry, our, the consulting engineering firm that has been doing the impact fee update for the last year, has recommended that in order to appropriately deal with these in the impact fee program, capital improvements program, that they should be shown on the, on the comprehensive plan, or the thoroughfare, the thoroughfare plan portion of the comprehensive plan.
So that is correct, George. And that'll be in the presentation next month, or at the public hearing in June.
And have we done engineering or anything on any of these roads yet?
Engineering?
Any, anything to just identify them?
No. No, no, just to identify them.
And do you have a timeframe when, when we'd ever work on these roads, based on what we have already going down the pipe?
That would be, that would be entailed in your budget process through the years, through projects, through the street improvement fund? So they'd be identified at that time and asked for funding for engineering and to consider a project.
Right, so I guess I'm asking that when you're looking at the projects that we've already approved, especially if we were going to the bond package, this was not listed on there as one of them so far.
Neither one of them have been. That's not any, it's not, they are not project at this, at this time, either on the transportation bond or on the COs we're considering in the future.
So are we looking, then, just estimating out this is four, five, six, seven years before funding is available?
Could be longer, yes.
Okay. All right, let me just do the public hearing real quick. Joe Palmer?
So, so we aren't taking this time off. You might ask somebody to step in.
I, I announced in the meeting that we were taking it up. You may have stepped out.
So the economist don't agree that talks about four ways you can spend money. You can spend your own money on yourself, you can spend your own money on somebody else, you can spend somebody else's money on yourself, or you can spend other people's money on other people. And that's what we do in government, is we spend other people's money. And I think we have an open and addiction. And you might ask, well, where does spending money come in here? You're just having a hearing, you can talk about moving a road, moving it 130 yards. I walked it off early today. I get you five cars a day, go out of, out of one into the other, out of Oak Crest and crossover into Gilman. The money comes in, it's like, because here's a minor detail that hasn't been mentioned yet. You're talking about going right through Apache on itself, and gentlemen loves that, not Starland. So I don't know if those projections were included in the presentation, if I had to remember. They've thought about how many times you're going to get sued. So benefits from this behavior, not the people of the city, but the taxpayers, attorney's benefit, you create wars with the business owners in this city and the residents for that matter. They're not going to lie down for you. They're going to take you to court, Mr. Kennedy. They're going to take you to court, as they have been. So they say the best time to plan a tree is 10 years ago. This is the research saying. The second best time is now. I happen to know the owner of Apache. You really want him to be gone? Extend an olive branch. Someone make the motion, kill this thing right now, do not take any further consideration of this. Seven years into the future, or God knows how far into the future, this is not something we need to talk about in this meeting. How do you think he's going to interpret this? He's going to take it as a slap in the face, and he's the type of gentleman who's going to augur it. I hope you're listening. He's going to augur it, and he's going to fight you, and it's going to cost more and more money than it would have. Pull this thing down right now and reevaluate, and approach it like a, a human being, approach it with respect, in the same way that you would want to do it. That's not an unreasonable request. I bet you can work and deal with him. I bet he'll sell properties to you. I don't speak for him, Jerry. I represent the Kennedale Lions Business Arms. But I can tell you, I know it well enough, because he's a reasonable person. So if you push a reasonable person far enough, they become a thing to worry about. And at that point, you can speak and reevaluate how you approach the person, or you can say, "Well, it's just the taxpayer's money. Just bring it to front and call the lawyer. They'll take it to court. Move back to our territory." Be reasonable.
All right, next up, David Deaver.
My name is David Deaver. He's in 25 votes, and the recent form of speech was about to be allowed in 25 votes. So people that live on the street, most of them could have gone a long time, and we don't understand why we want to reclassify a road as a thoroughfare when we have a road straight to the south, Eaton Road, Gilms Road, and just next street to the north, Southern Road, St. Montello, and now it's also a thoroughfare road. Doesn't make sense to me, spending taxpayer's money, whether it's May or July or six years down the road. it's May, or, or July, or six years down the road, to make a thoroughfare, when we already have one right there. It is just about getting impact fees, and bringing money back, trying to make the city useful. Money may be a feature, and I know we want to invest in this, and this will do things, but it's a good policy. This is great community. My family's been here, and I've lived here a long time. I weren't registered, I was a community, started a few, four years in the park ward, up there in the neighborhood. And I sit on that side, I know it's nice to, to hear people talk, and we know it's important. And we do what's right for everybody involved, not what's right for us select few people. So I just ask you to, you know, consider what we're facing, and don't make decisions to spend money that's wasteful. It doesn't accomplish something, it contributes to office system. Sweeney High Road, we definitely could use improvement. I'll be keeping Vegas, we have a benefit that five years down the road, we just need maybe to put a sidewalk in, or, you know, something along that, or, you know, not just the people that live on the street, but the people that use the street to get to their friends' house or whatever. So I just want to lay that out there, for everybody to consider, but I want to see us improve our city, and not try to make it compete with cities that surround us that have bigger budgets. And maybe we can take the money that we spent making a thoroughfare on Sweeney High and use it in an area where we, we have more, you know, more cars and more traffic on the road, and it didn't work. Sweeney High is kind of like, kind of walk into the neighborhood, it's built in our, it's got, built in neighborhoods to get there. So I just, I really appreciate y'all, y'all consider, like, you know, just people on Sweeney High, a lot of citizens who are willing to do it.
Thank you. All right, next up, Parker and, what is that?
Catalina Garcia. I'd like to do it. I don't want to live with the kids, because they may live in Sweeney High, but I think with the property, the next two years, my neighbors still think they, 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 they're 45, they're still alive here, they're big, my neighbors have a student. We've been to two fires, two big fires. First fire had five, first, where you hide, drop the load, all the way back to the purple house. And I'm going to do that. Five started, and the stuff, the other side. I'm watching, my neighbors pulled together, we all got a little yard, and put back the five out, so five was, wasn't angels, to turn back five, and we, my neighbors, and they, and they keep each other safe, my neighbors. My neighbors, except for 60, 40, year four, they were built, it was about 40, 50 years old, and people, in that same time, and all of the people, they lived there, 60, 70 people. And all of our people, there was four, they were very experienced, and the problem with all of that is people hate fear, out of their pockets, the test, to make this job count, to make that road stay like this. The 70 buildings, about 70 yards, you know, they're, they're, the neighbors, 200 of them, went through Sweeney High Road, all the way down to the park, and packed out of stuff, he provided eight workable, affordable, alternative, two blocks, you can raise, or, or replace, for the citizens that live there. This city, in there, is looking to change, to change, to protect, to repay, to give everybody, class, road to rights, broken earth, dangerous, hire a few citizens to kind of place, for the streets and much, again, people to save. Your people, probably, just couldn't afford, how our lives are played, and your city, and I can tell you, that y'all have a bad job, keep them safe. The street is a small street, but it has a major impact. We don't have sidewalks, we barely have gutters, but we can pass. My neighbors and my cousins, they've been paying that for 70 years, or sidewalks, gutters, that you shouldn't even have. We don't leave the electric. We're glad to have a city that serves, has wise, an understanding about leaving old people to live. Because you got a base property, but have a place called home, that you feel safe walking down the street, you walk through the door, or you catch, you're 70, above, you say, 70, above, they come through Sweeney High, and come over here, y'all, the road, you're in, you're in it, and I would say to people, do the best you can, keep them safe, you have, protect our lives, and our property values, we have to, we have to, we have to, and Dr. Wood, Dr. Wood, how it started, the things I would have, we already did that, we're just average, hardworking, but we take care of our kids, you know, if they're, they're, they're able to use the right, and this is like, it's a very, it's a goal.
Thank you. Next up, Dennis Faulkner?
Thank you. First of all, I really don't have much to say now, I've missed you for a little bit, but I'm pretty much everything I'm talking about. I live in 12th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th years, we're all alive, so far. And we, we see quite a bit of this proof, that I had five acres, you know, that's important. And, you know, I pay quite a bit of taxes, you know, due to increases of what my parents paid for, and you're supposed to be, so I feel like we, we contribute quite a bit, and I'm not going to complain about taxes, I mean, it's a burden of all three, but that's, that is what it is. I can, as I ever said, you know, you appreciate what you can build, being like his, and I think his, all of his, 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 like, I really don't understand the reason for, other than the few improvements, or, and, what you guys, they're here, and, through the life of the road, we don't really have a lot of things, I mean, and, you're not going to be able to take it out of the south, and whatever, you get your backyard, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, life, and, you know, the neighbors did it really, this is always, really, you know, it's a nice neighborhood, it's old, it's, it's, it's good, it's proven, but I don't understand, the whole reason for spending a lot of money on this, on this road, so we're, we're, start with the ditch, and the road is, and articles, both of us are pretty happy, I'm just a parent, I'm happy. So all I want to say is that, we don't think this is worth the time, money that y'all talk about. I like, I don't like paying my taxes, just like, like, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jan Joplin?
I just had a couple of questions, just to clarify, kind of, on Sweeney Hyatt. Is, so what you're talking about Sweeney Hyatt is from the beginning of Magnolia Hills, from sublet, changing, is that Sweeney Hyatt, all the way to where these fine citizens live?
Larry, you want to pop up? You can sit there, Larry, he can answer all those.
Yes, it'd be the entire section of Sweeney Hyatt, from Mansfield Cardinal to Joplin, changing it from a residential type street it is now, to an avenue, which still has the same width requirements. It could be two to four lanes, but not necessarily. We're not changing the roadway width that we currently have. We'd have to go back and ask for a roadway width if we were going to do that. So it's just the existing part of Sweeney Hyatt, Mansfield Cardinal to Joplin.
And that would include sidewalks?
So not the sublets. What is sublet through Magnolia Hills?
Collett Sublet, that's on there.
Oh, it's Collett Sublet?
Yeah, that's Collett Sublet.
Okay, so then Collett Sublet connects with Sweeney?
Yes.
Connects with Sweeney Hyatt, yes.
Okay, does it connect at the Ford's House, or, where does it change names? Because they're the first one after the development.
Sweeney Hyatt or Collett Sublet?
Collett, yeah, so Collett and...
Collett Sublet is an entire length from now sublet, all the way to Sweeney Hyatt.
Okay.
So that goes behind ours, that goes behind ours? Is that what it would do?
No, there's no, there's no proposed new road, anything, it's already existed.
Because it's Joplin, all the way down through that road, ours is...
Jan, Collett, Collett Sublet, Larry, if I could, just to clarify, Jan, I think what you're asking.
Hold on a second, let him clarify something.
Collett Sublet, the, the limits of that right now, it starts, for instance, at the Wildcat Traffic Circle.
Okay.
Goes through Magnolia Hills, and dead ends at Sweeney Hyatt.
Okay.
So it's that, that is Collett Sublet.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Remember, you, you were, the one section of Collett Sublet that's still, oh, we're going to go and put in new, a new road. That was on the budget plan, I mean, the bond plan?
Right. Well, and that's what I was getting confused about, is I thought Sweeney was on the project list, too.
No, no.
Okay, that's what I was getting a little bit confused about. So the impact fees then, so you haven't seen anything for Sweeney, you don't know what it would be, you don't know the cost. So the, okay, so the second part of the question is, the impact fees that would be available to Sweeney, are those the, those would be the total impact fee fund, right? Whatever is in that, if it's made an avenue, could be used then for whatever changes are going to be made?
Essentially for improvements to Sweeney Hyatt, or anything that's on the impact fee capital improvements plan. Those fees could be used for that, so that, Sweeney Hyatt, as an example, as the city changes or grows, or as there needs to be improvements to that road, even where it exists today, and only where it exists today, to handle the capacity that is needed for that whole area.
It's going to be.
Impact fees can be used to help us pay for those improvements that need to be made in order to make transportation circulation work better. It's not, it, again, as Larry said, it's not widening the street, it's trying to have a new source of revenue to use on that road if it needs improvement.
So currently, it's Sweeney Hyatt Road, and it has to be called an avenue in order for it to, okay.
There goes Larry again.
Is Collett Sublet an avenue?
Larry?
No.
I don't know how we classify Collett Sublet, but the classification you're having on this transportation plan is to qualify for the impact fees.
I understand.
Local residential streets not qualify for impact fees.
Okay.
So it's only being classified as an avenue, because it will connect with Collett Sublet. It also has Falconwood that connects, it also has Beacon Hill that connects. So as subdivisions connect onto a road, it does upgrade.
Okay.
We need to upgrade the classification, because it is handling more than just residential traffic.
Okay, so could you not make the same argument for Collett Sublet?
Certainly, and I think Collett Sublet's already on the impact fee.
Is it?
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
And Larry, so when we look at Collett, when we look at Sweeney Hyatt, it could be, when we do an improvement, it could be just still two lanes, curb and gutter, as opposed to asphalt with sidewalks.
The design of the future road instruction has not been decided.
But it could be that.
Yeah, it could be.
It could stay just a two-lane road.
We have AD wheelers that go behind the house, to Byronville, and here's your statement. Low AD wheelers pose a threat to older people driving up and down, however, we don't, we're not arguing by the law at the AD wheelers. We're just worried that if you're going to do something to that road, you're going to change the essence of its quality back out.
Would you, would you be objecting to, if we went in there to two-lane road, and all we did was take the two-lane road, make it concrete instead of asphalt, and put a sidewalk?
What do you think?
Let me speak real quick, go ahead.
I'm just letting this go all over the place now.
This is, this is what I love about, about what we're doing here, we're listening to the citizens. Okay, so, so to answer your question, is, we don't have a problem if they reclaim the road and keep it the same width?
Because it's got a little bit there 20 years.
Yeah.
You're a water tower.
What we don't want to do is like...
Let him finish.
What we don't want to do is like, try to straighten up the curves in the road, and take people's property, and get rid of the land that they have, because it's kind of like a, it's kind of like still living in the country, right? You know, it's kind of home for that.
Right. Larry, are we taking, is, you want to answer that?
The, the one thing about the comprehensive plan and the master thoroughfare plan, they are concept. There is no exact alignment. The exact alignment will come through engineering and, and conditions that will cause a shift in the road for one reason or another, due to engineering decisions.
Whenever a future council decides they want to do that road, if they want to do that.
Exactly. You will have to approve the contract for the engineering and approve the alignment.
Okay. Anything else, Jan?
Just a couple of things. Did you ever get a total of the impact fees for Magnolia?
Well, Kita, did we ever get the total impact fees for Magnolia? Yeah, if you can get with her afterwards, but go ahead, next question.
And then the only thing I have to say on Oak Crest...
Can, hang on a second, I'm going to let Jan speak here.
The only thing I have to say on Oak Crest is I don't really understand why the realignment would be necessary. I don't think there's a lot of traffic on that street that, as far as a safety reason, goes across Kennebale Parkway, it would still be the same. I mean, this is just like me thinking off the top of my head. I haven't obviously done a traffic study, or I haven't asked anyone, I'm just think, as I look at it, I would think that there's a, there's, we have a lot of other places we need to be putting our money right now, so, I don't really see that that would be necessary.
And feel free to call me, we'll talk a bit more about it.
That would be just my opinion on that one.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, Jan, if you want to run over there with Lakeeta?
We got 58,000 in construction inspection fees.
So far.
Didn't we get about half a million from Village? Was that the number that we, Village and Anne for those?
Yes, about 400, a little bit over 400,000.
But that's not, construction inspection fees is not impact fees. Were you asking about impact fees? Yeah, okay, she may not have that number.
No.
If we can have that number, if we, as soon as you get whatever number, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll break it down by construction inspection.
Okay, so let's, let's get back on track.
Can I, I'm sorry, it's loud.
Go ahead, Josh.
I just want to address the kind of honey swipe folks there. Basically, what we're doing, we're just recategorizing that to allow more, to free up more funds to improve that roadway in the future. I think that's basically what we're doing, correct?
That's essentially correct, is it's creating, it's putting it in a place, makes it accessible for a different kind, and more opportunity to fund improvements that need to be made in the future, by having it on that thoroughfare plan, and then in, in the impact fee program. The fact is, changes in the structure or where it goes could be done whether we had the availability of impact fees or not. That's not what this is doing. What this is doing is creating a new source of revenue for improvements we know are going to need to be done at some point in the future.
All right. Okay, so we have to consider an ordinance, an ordinance amending the 2012 comprehensive plan, diary motion, and the future transportation plan?
Is there still a public hearing?
What?
Is there still a public hearing?
I have closed a public hearing.
Okay.
Everybody talk. Can we make a motion on that?
I move we consider an ordinance amending the 2012 comprehensive plan by amending the future transportation plan to reclassify Sweeney Hyatt Road as an avenue-type thoroughfare, and the realignment of Oak Crest Drive.
Have a second.
I'll second.
You have a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, what is the driving factor on the Oak Crest realignment? I know Tech Dot's been all up on us on aligning misaligned roads that are within certain distances. Is that part of what caused this?
Yeah, there is the idea of creating a, a, a nice, clearing out that, that weird angle and connecting it with Gilmer over the 90-degree road. And, and yes, by the way, we have talked to property owners, contrary to what some people might think, we have talked to property owners, and we've had discussions with property owners in a very polite manner. That's, we have closed a public hearing, thank you. I'm just pointing out that we have had those discussions. So we have had those, yes, that has happened. I never said in agreement, Mr. Palmer, and the discussion is over, I'm just saying we have talked to them. And so anyway, I have a motion, and I have a second. Do I have any other questions? All right, then please enter your vote. You got a no? Sorry, I didn't look over there. Motion passes 3-1-0. Next item is executive session. We will not have anything coming out of the action items in executive session. It's only discussions, we're going into executive session. 551.071, we're not leaving, we're asking you to leave. Five-five-one point zero-seven-one, we're not leaving, we're asking you to leave, sorry about that. But that's the ending of any action items. All right, move back into regular session at eight-twelve. Open the doors to see if anybody wants to come in, everybody's out there. By the way, that didn't go too bad with your electronic stuff. Wow, man, I am stingy with reviews, really. Okay, so entertain a motion, just verbal. I have a, do I have a second about adjournment?
Second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand, raise your hand, raise your hand, motion adjourned. Thank you, everybody. He's supposed to shade my way. No, I do not, I freely admit that.